We thank you for it. We ask for your guidance tonight as we take on the matters of the county. Just give us your guidance as we proceed forward. And we ask for your hand over our law enforcement, our emergency service personnel, our military, and just bless them and keep them safe. Lord, we give it all to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Next item we have is citizen comment. Anyone wishing to address the board at this time, feel free to come up. Just state your name, what district, and you'll be provided three minutes. Seeing none, we will close citizen comment. Next item we have is public hearings. First one we have is 2024-504, special exemption, exception, Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all. As you mentioned, request 2024. That might help. Apologies for that. Special exception 2024-504 is for a family day home for up to 12 children. As you can see before you, the subject property is located at 213 Clearview Road and is further identified as tax map number 147D-4-6. This request is brought to you by Kevin and Jessica Jimenez, the property owners. It's important to note, so a family day home in our residential district, which is a daycare, you can have up to six children by right, meaning you could come in and get a zoning permit for that today so long as you meet all building and fire codes reasonable. In order to go past six, so she's requesting to hold up to 12 children in her house, she must come before you all for those additional six children to be kept at her house at any one time. Staff is not planning to go over the future land use map for this case. However, I would like to go over the current zoning. I'm now going to direct your attention to your screens so you've got a better understanding of the surrounding zoning in the area. So as you can see, the requested parcel is that light yellow, which is our R1 limited residential district. The goldish yellow is our R2 general residential district. And I will scroll out a little bit so we have our bearings. This is B2, and if I take off the zoning map, this is 29 Business, and this is Route 130. Here is Clearview Road. The new Johnson Health Center was just built here, so it's right down this road, and it's at the intersection of Sunset and Clearview. The R1 limited residential district is composed of certain quiet, relatively low-density, single-family residential areas, plus certain open space areas where similar residential developments are likely to occur. The regulations of this district are designed to stabilize and to protect essential characteristics of the district to that end, development is limited to single-family unit dwellings plus certain low-packed uses that serve the individual households of the district. As mentioned already, the parcel is surrounded, and as you can see before you, by residentially zoned property with single-family dwellings to the north, south, vacant land, a little to the southeast, and it is, of course, a corner lot. This request was sent to VDOT for review. They had no issues with the proposed special exception. Zoom in a little bit further, you can see they actually have two entrance points, access points for their property. This was also sent to the county's fire marshal, as well as the building official, for their review. The building official indicated a few things needed to be addressed, including updated smoke detectors, structural repairs to the deck, and to complete the renovations of the basement. Emergency services completed that inspection, but due to the ongoing renovations, they were not able to complete it. Therefore, there is a condition added on to this request for the fire marshal to go back out to this residence, if approved by you all, to take a look and approve the structure for the family day home. Regarding the impact, the proposed special exception would, of course, allow to serve to 12 children through a family day home. The hours, as indicated in the application, is proposed to be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Staff believes that the proposed use is low-impact in nature and should not have a negative impact on the surrounding community. However, that being said, the surrounding community may experience an uptick in traffic with approval of the family day home. You have to get the kids there somehow, so there will probably be additional traffic along Clearview Road. The planning commission recommended approval of this special exception with three conditions. Staff is not going to go over all of these conditions. However, item number two regarding emergency services. If the board chooses to approve this, we'd actually request that this be changed. It currently reads, "The applicant shall have their property re-inspected by the county's fire marshal upon completion of the basement's renovation." Staff would ask that, if you so choose to approve, to change that to where the applicant shall have their property re-inspected and approved by the county's fire marshal upon completion of the basement's renovations. So with that included in the staff report is the future land use map, application material, as well as standards from the Department of Education for family day homes that Ms. Jimenez must meet. And there is also a recommended motion found within the item summary. At this time, are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions? Mr. Martin?
Just a couple. What are the age ranges of the children?
I believe it's up to 12 years old.
Oh, up to 12.
I think it's up to 12. Let me.
I think that's correct.
I have this definition in here.
I mean, I'm fine with what the code says, but, I mean, what has the petitioner told you?
We have it in, I believe, our... It's children under the age of 13. It's our definition in our ordinance.
Okay, is that what they're planning on doing?
They would have to, yes, sir. Yes, yes, that is Ms. Jimenez's request.
I mean, I was just figuring between nine and three most school-aged children will be in school, except during the summer.
Right.
I just wanted... Are there any outside play areas?
Yeah, so there is a site plan included in it. I'm gonna pull up the GIA. So they do have a pool, and it's important to note that pool is separately fenced off. And then the Jimenezes, they're also putting in another fence for the backyard, so the kids will actually have a separate play area and still not be able to reach the pool in the backyard. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I've got a question. We've got two questions. Question one, will this become a school bus drop-off or pickup? Question two, do we maintain any type of a registry in the county for public safety purposes for day homes so that if you call 911, we know that there's a child daycare place there?
Regarding the first question, it is not the intention for this to be a bus stop, nor does Ms. Jimenez intend for that, I do not believe. And in regards to the second question, I'd have to ask Chief Beam about that. I'm sure we do have a list through the commissioner's office for approved businesses, but I'm not sure if the fire and EMS has that list.
We put notes in our CAD system. We know these things occur. We'll put it in our CAD. So anytime someone calls 911 from that address, it'll pull up generic information, Hemi children and the age ranges.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time, Board? All right, would the applicant like to come and speak before we open the hearing to the public?
Good evening. Thank you all for having us this evening. Yeah, so it is my desire to open Little Lamb's Bilingual Preschool. At Little Lamb's Bilingual Preschool, we desire to provide a nurturing Christian environment where children can thrive through activity-based learning and creative play. We'll also be introducing the Spanish language in that same engaging and fun way to just be able to help expand their minds and also, through the whole process, aid in preparing them for kinder and helping them make friends in a fun and loving environment. Let's see. We do have... This happened last time, too. It skipped a slide. I don't know if I can... That's interesting. Well, it was just a picture of me and my family. As he said, my name is Jessica. This is my husband, Kevin Jimenez. Kevin actually owns his own business in... as a handyman, and so he is the one doing all of the renovations for the preschool in the basement. And yeah, so we are... We're making our way. We're almost done with that. We've got a few more things that the building inspector made us aware of that we need to implement, so we're excited to get to finishing those. As you can see on the screen, this is our website. I am blessed to be able to have found a program that actually teaches women and, well, people all over the states how to start and run a successful and professional preschool to be able to add value to the community and to the preschool families. And so, yeah, this is our website. If you, you know, would like to take time to jot it down, take a look at it, you can, of course. But yeah, so we are also seeking to get licensed by the Virginia Department of Education, as you're able to see in the packet that you have. And so, in order to do that, we have to have three months of programmatic experience ahead of time, where we can only have up to four children. So we're working to get those four children. This is our first step, you know, going to the zoning department to get that approval. And then, at that time, we would petition the Virginia Department of Education for licensing. And let's see. Yeah, so just a little bit about what we're trying to do. We want to provide early childhood education, create a supportive community network for families. We want to serve those around us through community service, such as things like Thanksgiving food drives and other ways that, you know, the parent committee can come up with to be able to help the community in positive ways, as well as creating memories that last for the preschool children and their families and supporting the local schools by helping meet the need for preparing little ones for kinder, as I had mentioned. But also to answer the question that you had asked, throughout the school year, we plan on serving ages three through five during the day. And then, in the summertime, I am looking into the idea of being able to serve up to age eight with like a little kind of children's camp. That's still something that's in the works that I haven't fully, you know, laid out, but leaving that open for that potential. But yeah, so if anybody else has any questions, I'd love to be able to answer any.
Board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So Jessica, I appreciate your presentation. I think to go back to what some of the information you just provided as far as what your target age group is, would probably trigger another question I have is staffing, staffing levels, if you're dealing with 12 or 13, three-to-five-year-olds, I can only imagine the struggle that would be, right? What, you know, what are your... What do you foresee as your staffing to be able to maintain that span of control, as I call it, between your kids?
That's an awesome question. So I had the privilege of going to the family day home training that the Virginia Department of Education puts on. And so they made us aware that we are able to have up to 12 kids at that age, in that age range, per one staff. And so, for me, I actually have experience. I taught for a year and a half in Honduras, grades K through five, and I taught the kindergarten by myself. It was 10 kindergartners, so they were around that same age. And while it does have its challenges, it's also very manageable to be able to, you know, help those kiddos through what they need to do. The other benefit to the, you know, one staff per 12 kids is that my model for the preschool is only two and a half hours per session, so we'll have one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So it's a very, you know, short span of time where the kiddos are going to be busy with their, you know, engaging activities, arts, crafts, or outdoor play, having their snack time. So yeah, and I'm also going through, because I'm a learner myself. I love learning, and so I'm also excited for just how this will kind of challenge me to learn and grow. But ahead of time, I've been looking into ways that I can kind of manage the classroom as well and help the kiddos, you know, stay in line, if you will, but, you know, just with good behavior and encourage them to do the activities in front of them, so.
I commend you. Me managing 12, three to five? No, I don't think you want me.
I'm also blessed that the program that I mentioned, they also have a lot on that as well in terms of behavior management and also just kind of training in what they do in their classrooms and how they manage that, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in favor, feel free to come up and address the board at this time. We'll provide you three minutes. And just a reminder, please state your name and...
Thank you for having me. My name is Donna Massey, and I live two doors down from Jessica and Kevin Jimenez. We've been neighbors for about three and a half-plus years. They're good neighbors. I think what their plan is would be a benefit to the county. It's bilingual, something I don't think we've had before. It's a small group session. As a mom of three, grandmom of seven, I would love to have had this opportunity for myself and for my own daughters, too. That two and a half hours for a mom with a child, maybe one more at home, or maybe none, or maybe a sick parent, that two and a half hours a day might give them exactly what they need to have a better life and better quality. So I think for Amherst County, it would be a very positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Brooks Eam. I've known Jessica for roughly five years, I believe. I started off working with her and then became friends with her afterwards. And now I spend many of my days at her house tutoring her nephew. So I've had a lot of time talking with her about education, her plan for the preschool, and just getting to know her in general. She's so kind and loving and really passionate about education and about children, specifically within those ages. I think she would be such a good figure for these kids to have, to mold them and to grow them. And I think it would be a great resource for moms who need that kind of loving figure to help while they work and do other things. So I think it would be a great benefit to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Come on up. Don't be shy.
My name is Krista. I live here in Amherst County as well. I have two kids that I actually have done in homeschool hybrid programs, on and off through their whole educational system. And I can speak to, like, the quality versus quantity. Like, you love your kids. You want to give them resources that you don't necessarily have. And to have someone step in that... I'm also a church member with her, know her from that as well, and just have... See her passion for children. And to have somebody that is going to instill love of education at that age, to engage them, to get them started, to get them passionate about learning, is just such a huge asset. To have somebody step in beside you and to help get your kids just passionate in a way that sometimes parents can't. Sometimes I'll tell my child something 15 times, and they come home and they're so excited they learned this thing, and I'm like, oh, good, you heard it from someone at least. So I just thank for the community and to have a loving spirit to instill that and to what she's doing with the bilingual. There are so many studies about how great it is for kids, even if they don't continue on with it, how much it expands their brains, and just for her to come at it from that aspect, I think it's going to be a great benefit for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, what was your last name? I didn't... I didn't even catch it.
Krista Nash.
Nash.
N-A-S-H, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? In favor? All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board, I'm going to make a motion that we approve special exception 2024-504 to allow the family day home to serve up to 12 children with the amended condition, as Mr. Creasy noted earlier. And that specifically was that the applicant should have the property re-inspected and approved by the county's fire marshal upon completion of the renovations. So with that motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye. I vote aye as well. Any opposed? None, motion passes. Congratulations. Next item we have is 2024-351. Mr. Creasy.
Sir, Chairman, Board, as you indicated, rezoning 2024-351 is for tax map number 147A-181. The proposed rezoning is from R2 General Residential to M1 Industrial District. As mentioned, the property has no address. There are no structures located on the property, and the owner is Pema Song Woodlands LLC. Authorization for this rezoning is attached in the packet. The purpose of the rezoning, as mentioned, is to go to M1 Industrial and is to develop a pad-ready site for industrial use. Ms. Lori Saunders with the EDA is here, and she can speak more on the grant that the EDA is currently looking to apply for. But that is the reasoning for this rezoning. So unlike the last case, I would like to go over the future land use map on this rezoning, if I can find the layer. So the future land use map recommends manufacturing in medium density for the property. As you can see before you, the blue is your industrial, or your manufacturing, I should say, and your tannish color is your medium density. The land use... The industrial land use category is designated to show those areas where major industrial activities exist and/or are planned. Industrial development should be grouped in areas served by adequate highways and public utilities when practical. The medium-density residential category includes those areas where suburban patterns of residential development have occurred and are encouraged to incur in the future. Although single-family homes are the predominant land use in this category, you sometimes see higher-density residential developments in the R2 districts, such as your duplexes up to a quadplex by right. So in regard to this specific case, most of the areas for your industrial land use are located in the southern portions of the county. The exact same for your medium density. But I'm now going to turn off the future land use map and pull up our zoning layer. And as you can see, there's already a good amount of industrial, which is gray, surrounding this property or the subject parcel. So it kind of conforms with your conference of plan in which it indicates we'd like to see these in certain districts connected together. So it's not like this is out by itself with no manufacturing around it. As mentioned already, the subject parcel is currently zoned R2. You can see around it, to the east is zoned R2 property. Directly to the north is property already zoned M1. And then across the street, which is Dillard Road, you also have more M1 property as well as some B2 property.
Tyler, while you're talking, can you convert it over to the satellite image?
Yes. So the parcel is roughly 52 acres. As mentioned, it is currently vacant, and there's a transmission line going through the property. If you recall, a few meetings ago, you recently looked at a rezoning over here on 29 Business, and there is an AEP substation in the back, while the transmission line for that substation goes through this subject parcel that's being proposed to be rezoned. This was sent to the Amherst County Fire Marshal for review on the preliminary plans. They had no issues with that. And EDA is currently in conjunction with Hurt and Profit working on a traffic impact analysis for this parcel. Based upon its first analysis, VDOT recommended approval of the TIA recommendation for Lot B, which is this lot. And what they indicated at the intersection, they would need to construct a 200-by-200 southbound left turn lane. So that would be going towards 29 and a 200 northbound right taper on Dillard Road. So that would be going up towards 130. Now, in regards to the impact, it's important to note that there are no proffers with this rezoning. So when the board, when you all make your decision, you should not only take a look at what is permitted by right in your existing R2 district, but as well as the M1 district as well, due to there being no proffers with this rezoning. However, with that being said, staff believes that if the property is developed as proposed, the proposed rezoning should have no impact on the area, considering there already are industrial uses in the surrounding vicinity. And with that, I'd like to pull up real quickly the site plan for the pad sites so you guys have a better understanding of what they're proposing. So the Dillard Road is here. So if we zoom out a little bit, you got Dillard Road down here. 29 would be on the bottom of the page, if you follow Dillard Road. And so you have King's Road, which is right directly to the left. So the access for this parcel is towards the north. And as you can see, the development for it would be to the north of the transmission line in which you just saw. That is what the proposed grading plan is from Hurt and Profit. So you got that image, and now I'll flip back over to the aerial image for you. And so that development was seen right in this general area. The planning commission did recommend approval of this to the board, and this recommendation includes an amendment to the future land use map from medium density to manufacturing. I mean, at this time, are there any questions for staff?
Board, any questions?
Mr. Chairman? Tyler, drag that down, if you don't mind. No, the other way, please, sir. So the structure right there that's adjacent to this piece of property is Shabula-Hotman, correct? So there's also a gas line that runs... It's a large gas line that runs to the left. If you're facing Shabula-Hotman, runs to the left of that structure through there. I wouldn't think it would, but just for... Just to make sure we're covering our bases, that would not have any impact as far as us dealing with any setbacks or...
No, sir.
Okay.
Not for the pad... We actually... They've actually already submitted their pad site. And on their existing conditions, the only existing utility, if my mind serves me correctly, that's located physically on the property is that transmission line down at the bottom.
Okay.
But I do not believe that that gas line would impact it, but that's not to say it wouldn't. If we were to have like an actual site plan with buildings being constructed, they'd probably do little more due diligence in looking into that.
Yeah, because I would think that that northern tip, where it triangulates up there, we're going to be in pretty close proximity to that Columbia Gas line.
So along with that, what is that? It looks like a road scar that goes... It's on the plan north, yeah, right in there. What is it? Is that a stream?
The only streams are down here.
Okay, so what is that?
Up here, I'm not sure what this is. It's like some...
That is the vicinity of the gas line, so it's pretty close to the property line.
I was going to say, that's probably the access point for the gas line.
So is that the gas line going across the property that way?
Their existing conditions page, if my memory serves me right, did not show a gas line, nor were they affecting it at all on their grading plans.
I mean, it's up to them to deal with. I mean, they'll have to deal with that when they grade it. Probably stay away from it.
Yeah, yeah. I hope so.
So, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes.
So in the M1 district, what are some... What are some uses that might be allowed that might be impactful to the area?
Well, so you're... Right, great question. So you're completely zoned by residential property to the east, north, and south. So your residential property... I can't foresee the future, and neither can you all. So this is a very large vacant tract of land right here. Who's to say that's not... here. Who's to say that's not to develop into houses by right at some point? So with it currently being zoned R2, that's compatible. But if you were to rezone it to M1, that allows for fabrication, manufacturing, much more intense uses that could have a detriment on people, the smell of the area, not only the sound. It could also affect light pollution as well. And so typically, when you do your rezonings, you want to ensure those areas are set back far enough away from your residential areas where it does not have a negative impact. That being said, within this case, staff believes if it's redeveloped as is proposed, I got rid of the sheet now, but with the development centering around here, staff believes it shouldn't have a negative issue. However, once it's rezoned, they could divvy that parcel up into many more parcels, and then have a bunch of manufacturing lots on a 52-acre tract, which could be detrimental to the surrounding area.
So the land to the south of the power line, their grading plan didn't show that being developed. Is it usable property?
So it's not, they're going to be using it for a detention basin, no actual ground infrastructure, just some BMPs in place. It's not that usable, not this portion of the site. But that's not to say Mr. Coleman's property to the south isn't. A lot of it slopes all to the south, all of it slopes to the south.
That would, that would need to be rezoned also to allow the detention facilities.
Uh-uh, yes, sir.
Are they proposing to rezone that corner of it?
It's all one parcel. Yes, sir. They're proposing to rezone all 51.7 acres. Yes, sir.
I guess my question is, is if they're not going to use it, and it's unlikely they're going to develop it, and there's a concern that there may be uses that aren't compatible in the future, why rezone that triangular piece on the other side of the power line?
That's a, that's a great question. And that could be something the EDA might entertain to not rezone that section. Their application, though, did indicate 52 acres. So that's what we went with. However, that being said, I would not see it, I would not foresee that area developing industrial-wise, being a negative impact. However, that being said, we have no proffers in place to ensure it's developed the way it is.
Right. And if, if the EDA owned it,
Right.
I probably wouldn't have as big a concern about it. But the EDA doesn't own it.
Correct.
My understanding is they don't even have an option to purchase it. Is that correct? Right. So no proffers, no option. We're rezoning it, not tied to anything.
Yes, sir.
But if we took that approach, wouldn't that mean that the property owner would have to subdivide the property?
No. It would just, that
So you?
That piece of it would just remain zoned.
We'd be able to zone it two ways with one owner on one parcel of land?
Yes, sir. You could partial rezone it.
Okay.
You could. Now, I do not have that acreage, though, so that, I believe that that is the route the board would like to go, is that we should speak with the county attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but we should probably table this request so that we can have a better understanding of the acreages being rezoned for the parcel.
I agree. Absolutely.
I'm not suggesting we table it. I'm just suggesting some things that maybe we should have thought out prior to tonight. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have, I'm having some difficulty. I mean, we're just, right now, it's speculation because she said EDA doesn't own it. We don't know what the use would be. But the idea that we would zone a small portion of it differently from the original portion because of an artificial barrier that's in the sky, that being the power line, it just seems cumbersome to me. I don't know if I even put that very well, but splitting it up just seems cumbersome to me. I don't see a good reason for it.
Well, I think, I think the reason for it is, is one, you don't have any idea what the use is going to be in the future. There are no proffers limiting any of those uses. You don't know how it's going to be developed. It's all zoned residential now, as is the track that's joining it to plan east across the creek, right? They're not speculating any use on it, so why rezone it now? If they need, if they need it in the future, they can come back and rezone it or leave it as a buffer piece between them and the existing residentially zoned land.
Did you say why rezone it now?
Yeah.
Well, don't they have to rezone it in order to go after this grant? Isn't that the whole reason we're here?
The grant deadline is November 1st, so I've been working on this rezoning now for over a year. When the owner did the title, they didn't do a title search. So we had several pieces that were, had to get quick claim. It was just a mess. And so we got that cleared up. We subdivided it from the original so that it wouldn't, I wasn't going to have all 500 acres come through the rezoning since I really only needed the 52. In that lower lot, the reason why we, there's nothing there is the contour lines are horrendous. And so there really wouldn't be much that you could do with it. The VDOT is never going to give you an entrance in down that way. And so that's why everything was up at the upper end. We had VDOT, Daniel Brown, walk that with us, and the sight, line of sight was just terrible. But if you have it all in one piece now to have it rezoned, I don't have to come back to ask for it later, and it's done. But it also complies with our grant that we have.
That's, that's kind of my point, Ms. Saunders. It's not you.
No, it's not. But he is under, we have an agreement with him, with the state. I mean, the state didn't give us this money just to say, good luck, and I hope you can deal with this fellow. But they made him sign an agreement, a performance agreement. And so he cannot sell it either without meeting some of those points. So that helps.
There are some performance
Yes, under him. Yes, it is. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions from Mr. Creasy? Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, feel free to come and address the board at this time. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Board, which party?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion?
What? Answered my question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Any opposed? None. It passes. Congratulations.
We just never know.
Next, next item we have is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I moved on that, too.
Motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next item we have is new business, Lynchburg Regional Airport Authority Board report, Mr. Stanley.
I'll let the airport manager handle all of that.
Fair enough.
I listened to it once, and he knows it better than I do, so.
That works. Come on up, sir.
Do the, I'll try the keyboard. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board Supervisors, thank you all for having me here this evening. My name is Cedric Simon. I'm the Acting Airport Director for Lynchburg Regional Airport. Previous Airport Director Andrew Legola just moved on a few, few weeks ago to another airport. So I'm newly in that position. So thank you for taking time to view this presentation. A little bit of background of where we are with the airport. In 2019, 2019 was kind of our peak year for numbers. We hit 185,000 passengers. That's both inplanned and deplaned. We look at them both together. The whole industry got knocked around by the coronavirus, the pandemic. So it really drew everything back. There was a point in July of 2020 when we didn't even have any flights on a day. So just our passenger numbers went way down, as you'll see in some of my later slides. Since 2020, the passenger numbers have been coming up across the board, all, all around the industry. Numbers eventually started rebounding, and we're back to pre-pandemic frequencies for our aircraft operations. So we have the same amount of airplanes operating passenger service as we did before the pandemic. Service trends, we see, we have shoulder months at the airport, like, so seasonal trends drops off every single year. In February, we had our peak load factor. So out of the available seats, we had the most sold. 90% of the seats were sold in February. So really solid numbers that the airlines like to see. Into the spring, that was, you know, February is late winter. Into the spring and into the summer, we started getting more of the frequencies. In May, they added the fifth flight. We ended up having a seventh flight in the August month and here into September, and even working, and we're dropping back down to six here in October. Domestic business system-wide demand stabilized. So basically, we look at our demand of being either business travelers or the leisure travelers. So we've really seen, you know, during the pandemic, a lot of people were working remotely. People were, you know, leisure was kind of a term made up, like the business-leisure blend. But we have been seeing a lot of bounce back on the business side. International growth system-wide, while Lynchburg Regional Airport doesn't have any specific international flights, with the exception of some of the Asia markets, we are seeing a bounce back across the industry on the international demand. For our fall schedule, we do have, we do have, we're down to six flights. There were, this is October, and it is in November, it was one of our shoulder months. So it does fall back down a little bit. We're just six flights on, on most days, five flights on other times of day. Up through September, we had 10,300 scheduled seats, like available seats. So you're going to see on a couple of other slides where we put some graphs together. That's pretty high. It's, it was getting close to where we were pre-pandemic. And again, the seat capacity, we expanded in August with 26 more scheduled flights compared to 2019. Looking at our scheduled seats, these are the seats available for purchase. The peak seats available at Lynchburg Regional Airport was in 2019, August 2019, 12,430. With the data that we had last when this slide was made, we were climbing back up that direction. We had over the 10,000 seats, which we mentioned. And you can see the different colors on there, the different years, 2019, 2022, 2023. Kind of cut out the 2020 to add a 2021 just because it was such an outlier. It throws off all the numbers. It'd be way down there. But as you can see, the black line that's going up, it ends at 10,0300. We are within, you know, 2,000. That's mainly a factor of the size of aircraft operating right now. We've gotten the frequencies back, but there were smaller aircraft, so we have less available seats. Scheduled departures, just again, this was looking at the numbers. You can see the peak scheduled departures in October of 2019 were 212 scheduled departures. When this slide was created, we were at 206. So we were right there with the scheduled departures, just with the smaller airplanes. So we had less available seat miles. Total passengers by month. Again, our peak month for passengers was in October of 19. And that's a, you'll, you'll see the, the 19,844 number. But, and this was actual, this was actual numbers provided by the airlines. So this, this slide lags a little bit behind present data, present day, because we don't get the data right away. It is a few months behind. But whenever, in the springtime, we had 12,368 passengers on our actual seats. So that was, that reflects that load factor I talked about earlier. Monthly load factor, this is in the percentage. So out of the available seats, this is how full the airplanes were. So if it's a 50-seat airplane, and they have 48 people in there, that's a 90% load factor, if I did the math really quick in my head. So, but again, that's mostly full airplanes. So that's what the airlines want to see. That's their best return on their investments into, into this area. So that 90% number that we had earlier in the year was great. We are still holding our breath. We're trying to get that number back from the, the airlines keep all that in-house and eventually release it to us. So they haven't released the summer numbers yet, but we are hoping. In the 80s, it's very healthy. When it starts to dip below into the 70s, that's whenever we start asking questions, and we look and see if our marketing initiatives are working and how we can get more people into the seats. So one thing to keep in mind when people are buying, buying tickets is the ticket price. So this slide shows how our ticket prices work compared to two airports on either side of us, Roanoke and Charlottesville. When there are more seats available, there are more cheap seats available. So we only have 50-seat airplanes operating right now. Whenever we had the CRJ 900s that have 72 seats, they have, just if you look at metrics, they had more cheaper, they had cheaper seats on them. We have less of those right now. So you'll see on the slides, you know, you will notice a bump in our prices, but that's just because we have less seats to sell. So once they sell up, supply and demand. If there's demand, we've all experienced that in other places. The demand go, demand goes up, the prices go up sometimes. So that's why, in some of those slides, Charlottesville, Charlottesville can hold the lowest numbers overall, just because there are available seats. And then Roanoke is fairly comparable to what we are with a couple outliers. One of the biggest things that happened in our industry this year was the FA Reauthorization Act. It happened, it was signed into law in May. There were some big things that came out of that. Our favorite impact was the increase to our airport improvement program. Most of the funding, you know, all the funding at the airport is generated by user fees and grants. So the FA gives us grants, the state gives us grants, and then we have our local user fees. So the AIP program, the Airport Improvement Program, the FA and the Reauthorization Act of this year increased how much money all the airports across the border are getting, as well as the percentages that they contributed. So that was something that we took back and were pretty happy about. It allows some other work to be covered by grants. Some of, we, a lot of times, we, as the airport, we had to take on the costs for some of the engineering work, the design work. But now that's being covered. And one of the biggest things that we have this year programmed is, we're now in fiscal year 25. The FA turned, you know, federal calendar turned over the fiscal year. Our project for fiscal year 25 is a rehab of our primary commercial service runway 422. We're going to mill an overlay, the whole runway, 7,100 foot. The bids came in over $15 million, and we've gotten $14 million in discretionary funds from the federal government to cover that cost. So there will still be some local match and some state match, but it's great to hear a $15 million project. We have $14 million coming from the feds. So again, we thank everyone for the Reauthorization Act that was signed in. But that was just a small briefing of what's going on at the airport, you know, some of our numbers, our seats. Does anyone have any questions they would like to ask?
Board, any questions?
So I'm going to put you on the spot. And I'm sure this is a frequently asked question. But, you know, I know there's been some discussion throughout the years about some additional destinations. Is, is there anything that you may be able to provide any additional information on that, or whether that may be
Yeah.
a potential?
And again, we, I would love to come back here with some really great news, but just what I have right now is last year, one year ago, we were awarded a DOT grant, a Small Community Air Service Development Grant, if I say the word SCASD. We were, we were awarded, Lynchburg Regional Airport was awarded the SCASD grant. It's $500,000 from the feds with a $500,000 match. So we have, at the airport right now, a million dollars on the table for another airline, for another route. Specifically in that, that, what happens is, you know, a community looks in, says, what kind of routes can we support? We work with airlines. American Airlines has given us a letter of support that we turned over to DOT for a Chicago route. That was what was given us, that's how we were given the award. American has three years. Now we're down to two because that was one year ago. American has three years to, to act on that. So in theory, we could be getting a Chicago route. If American chooses not to act on that, we have a couple other options as far as what to do with that SCASD grant. But we are shortlist, American to Chicago, that was awarded to us one year ago. We still have two years left on that grant to use. Unrelated to SCASD grant, I will be going and attending an air service development conference in, next week in Green Bay, Wisconsin. And we are, we've asked for meetings with six airlines. I find, Lord willing, I find out the schedule tomorrow, who gets, you know, who wants to meet with us. In the industry, we kind of refer to it as speed dating for airlines, where we, we say, hey, it's six of you. And we sit here, and we, we talk about the metrics for Lynchburg and make sure that they know about it. So hopefully, you know, at one So hopefully, you know, at one point, one of those meetings will pan out. So that's just some things that we're doing for air service development.
I'm assuming based on seat availability versus what you're actually filling for seats looks good, right? So that should make it attractive for, at least somebody to look at you, right?
And they have more data that we don't even have. Like, for example, they already know our numbers for the summer because they, when, we call it speed dating because, you know, we'll go, American will be sitting, for example, American could be sitting across from us. We'll walk up, they'll have their computer up and they'll, Lynchburg, you know, and they'll pull up their numbers and we'll tell them our piece. They'll say some things back based off what they have. And then after 30 minutes, you get up and theoretically go to United or theoretically go to Allegiant, you know, whoever's the next one in the line. So that's just part of the industry conference and how it works. But yes, that's keeping Lynchburg on everybody's radar and just letting them know the, everything that's going on in the community.
Any further questions?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Stanley, thank you, sir.
We're hoping that we get that Chicago, with this really alleviated fabric between here and Charlotte, it makes it a whole lot easier to, to get back and forth.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
There is something you can do. Help. I'm sorry. There is something you can do to help change the, change the perception of the flyer. I fly to Hong Kong twice a year. I know clients of Hong Kong will fly here. They won't fly into Lynchburg because it never makes long time.
What's going on?
I don't know. All right, we're going to keep things moving here. Next item we have is the County Administrator's Report. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. The first item is under Boards, Commissions, and Committees. The Board is being asked to appoint an individual to the Amherst County Building Appeals Board. We have three openings, the terms of both Kevin Peterson, Norman Hanson, and Lynn Cunningham, who were at-large representatives, expired on April the 30th. We've advertised the vacancy. We most recently advertised it in the New Air Progress on September the 26th with a closing date of October the 9th. We had one letter of interest from Kevin Peterson, who has previously served on the Board. So you have a few recommendations, ones to reappoint Kevin Peterson. Again, we have three openings. This gentleman would like to reapply, and, or you can also direct us to readvertise, which we will continue to do because there's two more openings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would support reappointing Kevin Peterson.
All right. Motion on the floor, do you need, I guess you do need a vote on that. Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor say aye. I vote aye as well. So reappoint him and continue advertising for the remaining two.
Will do. Yes, sir. The second item is the designation of the VACO proxy. Every year, the Virginia Association of Counties holds their annual meeting. And during that meeting, VACO adopts its legislative agenda, conducts other business. Its bylaws calls for the counties to be represented by an elected official unless an appointed official is designated as a proxy. I'll be attending the meeting. And so the motion is to appoint me, Jeremy Bryant, to serve as the Amherst County Voting Representative at the annual VACO meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Board, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jeremy Bryant as our representative. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. The last item is the Community Policy and Management Team. The Board is being asked to appoint a member to that, to that Community Policy and Management Team, the CPMT for short. We recently had staff change in the grant position. We have a new staff member named Leslie Sprouse, who is our grants administrator. We're requesting that she's, will be in position to maintain the financial side of the CSA program within the Finance Department. So the motion is to appoint Mrs. Leslie Sprouse as the County Representative to the Amherst County Community Policy and Management Team.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, that we appoint Ms. Leslie Sprouse.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Next we have, thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next we have the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Popovich.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is just to let you know that we continue to have conversations with opposing counsel and our co-defendants in the Fisher matter. And we are still trying to find appropriate hearing date for hearing on our motion, our demurrus. So again, once I, once I finalize that, I'll be happy to provide you with more information.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next, we, we're opening back up for citizen comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board at this time, feel free to come up. You'll be provided three minutes. Please state your name and district.
Good evening. My name is Satori Fox. I am a resident of District Two, Amherst County. The forthcoming information is the result of my personal research and apart from the federal credentials, which I had provided to you at the last meeting. Today, the Amherst Board of Supervisors has been emailed with an attached action plan and research links for its own use. Please refer to this information for your own planning purposes. Since I had prior advice that our count, our country continues to be subject to invasion, please allow me to update you on some direct evidence that invaders have begun to show up in Amherst. Last Friday, October 11th, 2024, I witnessed a white extended van pull up to the bank bordering the Quickie Mart at the Amherst Circle. The van was full of Spanish-speaking persons who were cashing their paychecks. I have no idea where they are locally working, as I only kept them under observation and did not engage them in conversation. Last Sunday, October 20th, 2024, I witnessed a crew of four Hispanics working on a trench outside of the second stage. I wondered why and how these contractors were afforded such work when we have local contractors available. Yesterday, I observed two Latino males ordering food at the subway locating inside Apple Market at Route 151 and Route 229. Both men were covered nearly head to toe with tattoos, signifying the probability that these persons are gang members and/or former prison inmates from South America. Before anyone should accuse this God-loving Christian woman of prejudice, please understand that I am Mexican. It pains me to bring these facts before you about my people, the facts they are, and ignorance of these practices on your part will equal the opportunity for such harm to be visited upon our people. With respect to the oncoming influx of foreign invaders, please see my action plan, which sets forth an advisory to ready defenses, store food, water, and medical supplies, and be ready to defend each other. Since I have given you a blueprint of how to proceed with the challenges now facing our people, I would like to leave you with these final thoughts. There is no greater, there is power, no power greater than the power provided to us by the Almighty. Jehovah is our ultimate protection and supply. Seek him daily for your wisdom and direction. Repent, pray, and proceed boldly and bravely with his instructions that God provides so that Amherst has the best chance to survive and thrive in these adversities. I leave you now with an address provided to the Continental Congress of 1974, wherein a pious man delivered the following reading and prayer of King David. Plead my cause, O Lord, with them that strive with me. Fight against them that fight against me. Take hold of shield and buckler and stand up for mine help. Draw out also the spear and stop the way against them that persecute me. Say unto my soul, I am thy salvation. Let them be confounded and put to shame that seek after my soul. I'll be available for comments and questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board at this time? Just a reminder, state your name and district, please.
My name is Charles Greve, District Three, barely. Just a note, many of us have seen a change in our property taxes largely from inflation, specifically vehicles. 3.45% exceeds some of our annual car payments for what we owe on our vehicles. And I'm hearing a lot of talk about grants from the state for, oh, this business, that business, whatever. Would it be possible to ask the state to buffer the citizens instead of private industry? Rather, because a, a taxation on a vehicle at 3.45%, which is approximately a loan value, is better known as extortion. That is quite high. And if we are going to seek money for a private industry, I think that maybe seeking grants to alleviate the taxation on us might be an admirable pursuit. And that's it.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll close citizen comment. Next we have matters for members of the Board. Mr. Adams.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I wanted to follow up on is with Mr. Bryant is, can we, when do you and Ms. McBride anticipate us having, I guess, further information on the outcome of the audit as far as the, the numbers go and carry forward monies and things of that nature?
Well, we, Ms. McBride and I just had a conversation about the audit this morning. I know she spent this weekend working on getting the numbers prepared for the auditors. They're coming in in two weeks. Is that right? Next week.
They'll be here for two weeks. We're not due to have the audit finished until December 15th.
I understand as far as the one coming up, but the one that we just finished, have we, do we still have to review that as far as?
It's already been presented.
Carry forward, I know the audit's been presented as far as carry forward monies and things of that nature.
I am working on that now, but as I find them, you're just talking, like, if, yeah, I found one today because someone sent a bill in. So I won't know until I get the financial system up and squared away.
Okay.
Because that is not complete yet on the general ledger side.
All right. So that's a great segue into my next question, is where, where do we, I, I got, we, obviously we got your report on Friday, but where, where do we sit with, with RDA?
Payroll and payables are going fine. We're working through the training for departments and some other issues that have come up. We do not have complete financial information yet for me to provide you because I don't have beginning balances to roll forward yet. They're working on that now. I did not get a response today. I asked about that today because I gave them the last of the information they had asked me for last week. So I'll follow up again. I'm hoping that they'll have that done so that as the auditors get busy, I can get some first quarter information ready for you all.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Martin?
Just a couple of things. One, the Board was at a ribbon-cutting ceremony this afternoon for the Seminole Park on Phelps Road. That park turned out wonderfully, I believe, and that's a great example of partnerships between the private side, state, local governments, county staff. That, that's a very nice park for the south end of the county. And I'm sure Ms. Tucker will cover it, but the Amherst County Fair is coming up this weekend and encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. The Amherst County Fair is coming up Thursday, goes through Sunday. It's, I think, going to be bigger, better, and more vibrant than we've ever seen. I'm very excited about it. I want to give a shout out to all the county employees who have made this thing possible, to Eric Bowen, who are extension agent, who's acting as fair director, and all the volunteers that have come together. We have a lot to talk about after this fair as a Board, as to what the future looks like and how we, how we intend to make sure we have a healthy fair again.
Thank you, ma'am. Only item I'll bring up is the fair, so come out, enjoy yourself this weekend. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a couple of things I shouldn't have mentioned. Speaking of fairs this weekend, obviously, we want to promote the Amherst County Fair, but I, I don't want us to forget about the Apple Harvest Festival as well this weekend. So let's, let's, we, we need to make sure as a county that we need to support the Apple Harvest Festival. Secondly, Chief Beam and I participated on Sunday, this past Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Sam's. The Lynchburg Police Department, along with, they were kind of the spearheads, and now they have brought in a bunch of other agencies, public safety agencies within central Virginia. And they're coordinating the efforts with some agents that are in western North Carolina at this point in time. We had a very productive afternoon, Sunday, at Sam's. We will be back there again this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 6:00 for anybody watching on YouTube. So this is an initiative to actually support our first responders in western North Carolina. So things that we can do to support them, such as charcoal and gloves, lights, anything that they can use, and blankets, because obviously, cold weather is starting to move in. So we would ask anybody that they could, could come out and graciously support that initiative this, this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 6:00 at Sam's on Ward's Road. And then we'll be transporting all the product down next week at some point in time. So thank you.
Mr. Adams? With that, I'll make a, we need a motion to go into closed session, so I'll make the motion. Make a motion that we enter into closed session for consultation with legal counsel retained by the Board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding public safety operations pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A8. That being said, motion to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
that to the best of each board member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identifying the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session. Mr. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Tucker.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Closed. We're done.